Good afternoon, everybody. My welcome to the Audit Committee on the last December 30th of 2020. The now to order is 302. And today we're going to be hearing a presentation on three reports from Auditor Norion. So why don't we just, Auditor, why don't you just go right into it, sir?
Okay, so I'll share my screen and present the first report, which is the bulk trash report. Let's see, do you guys see the report?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so we recently completed our audit of the bulk trash sticker program at DPW. We did the audit in accordance with our FY 20 audit plan. The objective of the audit was to determine that bulk trash stickers are properly tracked, inventoried, and physically secured. I'll go to page one, just to give you a background about the program. The program generates annual revenues of about $225,000 for fiscal year 20. Of that $225,000, 99% of that is generated from Big Y. So citizens of Springfield can go and buy bulk trash stickers for bulk items, primarily at Big Y or at the city clerk's office if they want to come in and do an in-person transaction. So, but we wanted to make sure that the controls were appropriate at Big Y, since they are holding these stickers, which do have value and are considered assets. So overall, we determined the program to be sound. Big Y has a very effective inventory management program, as you would expect, for a large commercial grocer like Big Y. We did have a couple of suggestions for improvements. And I'll turn to page 3 of the report to talk about those suggestions. And they primarily relate to processes and procedures at City Clerk. Now, as I mentioned, City Clerk handles a very small portion of the bulk trash sticker sales, 1%. So we're looking at about less than $3,000 annually. But we did note that bulk sticker sales were monitored or reconciled as they should be. These stickers do have value, and they should be safeguarded as such and monitored and inventoried. So we gave City Clerk a reconciliation form to use to track their bulk sticker activity. And they've agreed to use such forms and do the reconciliation and inventory monthly. Our next suggestion, again, was just, as I mentioned, is to safeguard the bulk stickers. We noted that they were lying out on window sills and not necessarily secured when they were not being used. So what we recommended is that when you have these bulk stickers that are, when they're not used, that they be secured in a cabinet, locked cabinet, and at night be placed in the vault, secured in the vault. That's, we believe that's a pretty easy step, and they've agreed to implement those procedures. Our third comment has to do with just expanding the bulk sticker program to allow for remote purchases of bulk stickers. Currently, the city doesn't offer its citizens a way to buy bulk trash stickers remotely through, you know, online, through online or through a mail-in program. We looked at other communities that offer such programs, like the city of Westfield, Long Meadow. They offer such programs where a resident can go online, fill out an application, mail it in, and pay for their dump pass online. So that's what we're recommending that the city consider expanding the program to offer such programs. And it might be the preferable way in our current environment, where citizens may be hesitant in making in-person purchases. So with that, I just wanted to reiterate, the program is sound. I want to give my thanks to Director Signoli and Tenisha Davis for their cooperation in this audit. Devilla, do you have any questions with respect to this report?
The, first of all, for that, for that report, I guess the only comment that I would have is that, although I am glad that the bulk sticker is being moved online and having another option to purchase, I see would like to see some sort of a system in which it's more easy accessible to people. Online is a great idea. It makes sense, but unfortunately, as we know, not everybody in the city has online access. So, but maybe that's something that we can work in the future. I don't have an answer for it now. I truly believe that this should be accessible, very accessible to people. But no, more of a comment on that aspect. I turn it over maybe to my other colleagues if they have a question or comment on the issue on this particular report.
Counselor Davila?
Yes.
I have a question about, I heard Young say that they wanted to expand to areas like Mason Square. Is there any particular location that might be a point of interest? Because as we know, it's currently a food desert, and they don't, they don't have grocery stores like Big Y to be able to get the bulk stickers. So is there any discussion on areas and communities like that?
I'll leave that to Director Signoli.
Nora?
Answering that, Director Signoli.
Yeah, right now, the only option that we have available is Big Y. Big Y has basically an exclusive right. They do not charge anything for us to have their stickers there. They basically send us a check for $8 when they send it, so there is no cost. If we go to other places, we will lose Big Y. Big Y wants exclusivity, and so with everything that they do there, probably about five years ago or so, maybe even longer, there was a possibility of the city looking at pay-as-you-throw for trash. It was something that the DPW didn't want to do, but it was being looked at by some people on the council at that time. And we actually started to look into vendors where you would be able to buy bags. And each vendor wanted a cut. So if we were going to sell an $8 sticker and somebody wanted $2, we were going to have to, we couldn't take that loss, we would then have to sell them for 10. So the issue becomes, A, do we want to lose Big Y? I don't. But if we open it up to more places to have the stickers, which I think is a good idea, I think the auditing process is going to turn into a big mess, because we would have to have all of those places, the only option available, they would have to prepay for stickers and to the city for us to give them to them. That would be the only option, but at the same time, we would lose Big Y.
Thank you, Chris. I remember when I was in finance, that was actually the research that I was doing, pay-as-you-go, different methods of, or different sized trash barrels to throw away. Like that, so I do remember that. But I think if we can't go that route and we need to leave it with Big Y, then a good option would be the online option that was mentioned in the report.
Yeah, me, just on the online side, we've done some research on that over the past month or so. There's kind of two, when you look at vital records in the city through the clerk's office, they kind of have it two different ways. Number one, you, if there's this company, I just want to tech, Vital Check, that, that could handle all of this stuff, their fees are exorbitant. If you want a birth certificate for $20, you're paying 28 for it. So there's, there's a huge markup on all of them. There is an option to send a form to the city clerk's office that they can process, and then mail it back. However, they don't take checks. It's got to be cash, which I know how Young feels about that. Or it's got to be a money order or a certified check. So, you know, now you're creating another, another level of problem, I guess, for people on how we're going to do that. The, the mail-in option is viable. I don't have any problem with that. Somebody would have to process it, but then again, we don't take credit cards that way. And my preference would be is we do not take cash, because I don't think we want a lot of cash floating around. And I don't know what Young's thought on that would be.
All right, I've asked the city treasurer to reach out to DPW to see if there's a platform that he could recommend. Right now, residents use City Hall systems to pay their real estate taxes online. So I think we could use a similar platform in paying for bulk sticker, similar to what the city of Westfield does. City of Westfield, you go, I think they use Unipay to pay for their real estate taxes. They also take payments for dump passes using that platform. So that's something that I encouraged Director Signoli to discuss with the city treasurer to see if that's a viable option.
Not to cut you off, Young, we've been going back and forth over the last couple of weeks with IT as well on that, to figure out availability of programs, fees. You know, when we're doing something, it's only eight, you know, if you're paying your real estate taxes and you're paying $1,000, paying a $4 fee may not be a big deal. But if you're buying an $8 sticker, you know, what's the fee that's going to be associated with that? So.
Also, when we pay our real estate taxes, Chris, we can use the check option where there's no fee.
Right, yeah, that, yeah, that's when you're paying that normally. But you can also do it through this other company, through this, through this company where you're paying with, through a credit card. And there's.
Yes.
Yeah, if you're paying by check, you just send the check in, but some people choose, you know, it's, you know, going with college, you could buy stuff, you could pay for it with a check, or if you use the credit card, there was a fee associated with it on that. So we're, yeah, I got IT looking into that, Young.
Okay.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Councilor, thank you, Councilor Whitfield. Councilor Allen, do you have a question, sir?
No, I'm all set, no, thank you.
I just want to follow up with, with the comment regarding Big Y. And although I understand the argument, and it makes sense from a, from a business standpoint, honestly, I'm still not fully satisfied. I, I do believe that Big Y is not going to just give it up. That's a good traffic coming in. I do believe that this should be easy accessible, CVS, Walgreens. Which, by the way, Chris, what, have we approached either CVS or Walgreens, and what have they said?
We did that when we did, like I said, five, six years ago, when we were looking at pay-as-you-throw. And, you know, we were looking at charging, just as an example, if a bag was going to be $1.50, they wanted to charge $2.50.
But, but that was five or six.
Everybody that wants to do something like this, they want a cut, they want, they want, you know, a cut of what is being sold.
Well, Big Y doesn't have, doesn't get a cut.
No, they get nothing.
So what, that was five or six years ago, what do they say now? Do we approach them recently, Chris?
With Big Y or with?
No, with CVS.
No, we haven't, we haven't spoken to any other places, but, you know, if we, my, now, you know, then, then the issue becomes, okay, how many of these places are we going to give them to? They got to prepay, because that's the, that's the only way that I would think it would work. And whether Young agrees with me or not, I don't know, because now we would be keeping track of how many, how many of these bulk stickers were, were sold. I don't know, 20?
I understand that, but I truly believe, as much as I hate increasing the workload for the audit department, I think the trade-off of the convenience to the resident, to me, in my book, is very critical. And also.
They will pay more.
I understand that.
They will pay more than the face value.
Well, possibly, because we haven't talked to CVS or Walgreens recently. So I, this is something that I'm sure we're going to resolve now. I do think that I would like to see this follow-up to the next session. I think we can come up with it. I think that we're a good start here, we really are. But I think I would love to see, like, Councilor Whitfield, we have areas like Mason Square, they have food deserts, that I also think might be a little difficult for some people with some of those areas to, to get access. So just another comment, but thank you, guys. Chris, thank you for your work on that. Auditor Nor, thank you for that. Any other question, this particular subject, before we move on to the next report?
Yeah, I, I have one now, Counselor Davila.
Please, Counselor.
Thank you. Which two Big Ys are it? Is it the two that are in Springfield, St. James?
There's 10, 10 or 11. I think Springfield, Long Meadow, Ludlow, West Springfield, East Long Meadow.
Oh, so it's several Big Ys?
Yeah, it's 10 or 11.
Is it for sure at both Springfield ones, the one in St. James and the one at Allen and Cooley?
Yes, yes, that we do know.
Allen and Cooley.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I know Young did an audit at those locations.
Yeah, and other communities use Big Y as well, like, city of Westfield uses Big Y to sell their dump passes. With Long Meadow, they use Big Y to sell their extra trash bags. So Big Y is a preferred vendor for some communities.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So, Yan, did you, did you, it says here, St. James Avenue, it says St. James Street, but really, St. James Avenue, Cooley Street, and East Long Meadow. Were those the only three, or are there other ones where you can buy them, but you didn't audit those?
Well, we visited two stores, the stores that had the most traffic, St. James and the Cooley Street location. And at both locations, their process was sound. They have a very tight system in terms of how they manage that bulk sticker program.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Allen. Very well, Counselor Nor, next report, sir?
Sure. Our next report, I will share my screen again.
And I'm done. I'm going to wish everybody a Happy New Year and leave.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Happy New Year.
Thanks, Chris, take care, Happy New Year.
Auditor, would that be the, would that be the city trust?
No, it's the follow-up report. It's the follow-up review report on our audits of the purchasing accounts payable program and the life insurance benefit. So you should hopefully see my screen.
Yep.
Okay, so, just turned to page one. So we did this review because it was part of our FY 20 audit plan. And also, as part of our mandate, we follow up on audits that we've done in the past just to check on the status of recommendations that we've made. Particularly for those recommendations that have been agreed to by management to implement, we go and see if they've actually been implemented. So we did two audits here. Well, we did the audit of the purchasing accounts payable back in fiscal year 19, and the life insurance benefit audit in fiscal year 19. So I'll start off with the, the purchasing and accounts payable for performance audit. So we made 12 recommendations, of which eight are in process. Two will not be implemented. One has been implemented and one partially implemented. Most of the in-process recommendations relate to formalizing the expenditure policy at the comptroller and improving controls over the master vendor file. So for those, since we do have, since we did have recommendations that were in process, we updated our procedures to test for duplicative invoices that have been paid, along with identifying duplicative vendors. So for the review period, we've identified 2,000 duplicative invoice payments for FY 20 compared to 37,000 when we did, when we last did the audit. I mean, that's, that's pretty good. I mean, Pat Burns does an phenomenal job in comptrollers in negating the risk of duplicative payments. They have a very sound process, so a lot of credit goes out to his department along with the finance department. We also looked at vendors, that is, vendors that have the same tax ID numbers. We've identified 135 vendors with the same tax ID numbers. And that's down from 381 that we've identified in fiscal year 19. So a big improvement. Again, that's a lot of credit that goes out to the procurement department. So I would say that this is a fairly big process at the city. The city processes hundreds of millions of payments. And to say that we've identified very minimal duplicative payments says a law, says a a great deal about how strong the processes are at the city of Springfield. So with that, I turn it over to you, Counselor Devilla. And as to the procurement side.
Thank you, sorry, thank you, Auditor. Counselor Allen, you have a question, sir?
Not as yet, thank you. I just wanted to listen a little bit more, I might get.
Oh, I see, you hand what's up here.
Oh, that was from before, sorry.
Very well, I don't have any questions myself. I'm glad to see that the duplicate payments are minimized a lot, so a great job there. Counselor Whitfield?
No, I'm all set, Counselor, thank you.
You're welcome. Auditor, you may continue, sir.
Okay, so then I'll move on to the life insurance benefit follow-up. So as I mentioned, this audit was done in fiscal year 19. Just as a background, the city offers many benefits to its employees, one of which is the life insurance benefit, where I think the city is a portion for the basic and employees, and also you get supplemental life insurance. So during, when we did the audit, we made 10 recommendations, of which four have been implemented, five are in process, and one is not applicable. So the one that's not applicable had to do with more oversight being warranted from the human resources department. That's no longer applicable, because benefit has now been moved under the CAFOs department. So the CAFO has oversight over the benefits department, which we fully agree with, because this is more of a numbers-oriented department, dealing with lots of numbers. So most of the in-process recommendations have to do with reconciling information contained in Guardian, which is the benefit insurance provider, along with the city's accounting system, UNIS. So since we did have in-process recommendations that, you know, that haven't been implemented, we've updated our procedures. And we noted that there were approximately 32,000 adverse impact on the city as a result of, I guess, these, I guess, for lack of a better word, lack of reconciliation between Guardian and the city's accounting system. So with that, I will point out a couple of areas or findings that I want to share with the committee here. So I'll turn to finding 20 of the report, which is on page 14. So this finding has to do with, there was no insurance coverage, but there were payroll deductions. So in other words, employee, employees or participants were paying for coverage, but they weren't covered. So this resulted in an underpayment of premiums. And another in-process recommendation that I want to point out is, find on page 18, finding 27, and this has to do with, there's, participants are getting insurance coverage, but not paying for them. So this resulted in the city paying 45,000 premiums that they should have been, that should have come from participants. Now, this is an ongoing process. Heather, the new director, has been implementing reconciliation procedures, and she's come a long ways in setting up new processes. But this is a big project, it'll take some time to fully reconcile the two systems. Any questions?
No, sounds good.
Very well, Auditor, no questions. I do believe that Counselor Whitfield had to leave the meeting, but there's another question, you can continue, Auditor.
Okay, so that is, that concludes the follow-up report. And I'll move on to city trusts. So I'll go back and see if I can share my screen. Okay, everyone's, did everyone, everyone see my screen?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So we did this audit as part of our fiscal year 20 audit plan. The objective of this review audit was to ensure that trust expenditures were made in accordance with trust or bequeath agreements. So just to background, the city is a beneficiary from trusts. When people pass away, they leave estates and trusts to the city for, for certain programs. And those programs are listed, or those trusts are listed on page two of this report. James Garvey Library, James Corkin Library, William Walker, Horace Moses Barney Trusts, Walker Trust over at Parks, and the Rose Trust for the Old North Church. So those are the trusts that we looked at. Primarily looking at the trust document to see what the purpose, or what was allowed to be expended or used by the city. And we made sure that the city expended the funds in accordance with those trust agreements. So in summary, we had no significant findings. We just had a couple of suggestions. One has to do with the library. We just, we recommended that they better track expenditures over at the Forest Park branch related to the Garvey Trust. And our second comment had to do with the library and the Parks Department certifying compliance with the William Walker Trust expenditures. The trustee sends out a form of compliance to the city, and that usually has to be a test, has to be signed off by the governing body to ensure, to state that they were in compliance with the trust document as it relates to the Walker. has to be signed off by the governing body to ensure, to state that they were in compliance with the trust document as it relates to the Walker Trust.
So it will be the governing body who is overseeing the trusses according to which is.
So at the Parks Department, it's the Park Commissioners. And at the library, it's the, I think the library board.
Auditor, are those trusts, the active trusts that we have in the city?
Yes. So we show on page two, the income that the city receives and the expenditures.
Now, auditor, is that, is that yearly income or?
Yes, for fiscal year 19.
Okay, so we will be getting the amount next year as well?
It could change, but typically it's usually the same, fairly consistent.
Or, or until the trust dries out?
Right, but most of these trusts are perpetual. So they're permanent. When someone passes away, they bequeaths like a million dollars in a permanent fund. You know, let's say that million dollar has to remain intact in perpetuity. And the income generated from those, from that fund could be used, it could be used for, for certain programs.
I see.
That's, that's why they're called trusts is that they remain in perpetuity. So those funds remain, so those funds remain intact.
Right. Okay. Excellent. Excellent. Is that it, auditor?
That's it on my end. There's nothing else. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Allen, any question?
Yes, I do. So Young, you said that the insurance group, I think, now reports to the Office of Management and Budget.
Yes.
And I was wondering who they reported to before.
My apologies, if I may, if I apologize. I see that we just be enjoyed by Council President Hearst.
Yeah, and I apologize, Counselor Davila. Actually, I thought the meeting was at 3:30. So I, so, so my apologies. So ignore me and carry on and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you. Did you get the reports, Mr. President?
I did, I did.
Okay. Well, Counselor Allen, force your way.
Yeah, thank you. Young, who did the, you referred to a group about 10 minutes ago. They're not, they now reported to the CAFO because it was more of a financial kind of a thing. Who did they report to before?
Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations, Bill Mahoney.
Which is still in the CAFO's organization, right?
Right, but now they have a direct line to the CAFO, the benefit department.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you. And these, with this trust money, how does this work? That when the, is the custodian of the trust the city or there's still some?
It's a financial institution, usually a bank.
Okay, a bank is a custodian and they send the money to like, to the city. Okay.
Yep.
That once a year kind of thing?
Usually. Well, it depends on the frequency of payments. I think for the Walker Trust, they make quarterly payments. So it's, some trusts do it annually.
And does it go into the, the general fund?
I believe so. It goes to the general fund, but the funds, they track the spending of such funds as required by the trust agreements. You need to prove that those funds were expended for such purposes.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, great. Thank you.
Very well. Mr. President, any questions? No, I don't think so. Very well. I think, I think that comes out to be $300,000 in funds, right? Give or take?
Approximately, yes.
Approximately, okay. Very well. Good. I don't have any, any other more questions. Is there anything else you want to present, auditor? Any wrap up comments?
That's it for now. And I will certainly follow up with you or the new audit chair in terms of laying out future meetings in the next three months.
Very well, very well. Well, thank you so much. I want to thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you on my first year on the council, on the audit committee. I find this fascinating. And I thank you for your due diligence on behalf of the people of Springfield. I wish everybody who's watching us all at home to have a safe and happy new year. And, you know, got goodwill and we will have a better year next year. With that being said, Happy New Years, everybody. God bless.
Happy New Year.
And. Meet us at 3:36. Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year. Thank you.